All right, can you hear me? Okay, okay, good. At least one person nodded. Well, it's 3:15. Let's, uh, do we have quorum? We do not have quorum yet. Yes, we do. Yes, Tony, myself, Charlie, Paula. Four. That's, that's quorum. All right. Well, I guess maybe we can wait a couple more minutes for Shelley or Steve to jump on.
What about Ingrid?
No, not her. I forgot about her.
She doesn't count?
Well, I'm trying to go through like the chairs of the dais and like, okay, where's, and she's never sat at the dais yet, so.
What's a dais?
Desk.
Oh, that thing. I don't remember that. It's been a year.
I know. That's true.
There's Ms. Wu, so that's six. So you're good.
It's been a long year.
You're just missing the councilman from Texas. I mean, from the board, whatever ward that is.
Is Steve Davis going to join us? Jonathan, is Steve going to be able to join us? Cause.
I, I heard that he did not have water. The last I heard is that he did not have water, but he did have electricity, but I think it's rolling and it's in and out. So I do not know his ability to join us. I don't know. Um, but we are here to do interviews for the tourism board. Uh, before we do that, I want to quickly, um, maybe not so quickly introduce Ryan Muse as our new city clerk. Congratulations, Ryan.
Congratulations, Ryan.
Nice. Glad to have you here on this role.
I'll come aboard.
I, I said, you know, Steve Boyd, you've, you've worked with Ryan longer than, uh, well than any of us have. So I thought, you know, maybe Steve could introduce Ryan and give me kind of a, give us kind of an introduction.
Yep. Happy to do that. Um, we hired Ryan to be the assistant clerk slash assistant municipal court administrator, like, uh, I don't know, three months or so ago, uh, we stole him from the county. He was in the clerk's office over there. And when Catherine left and I became acting city clerk, it turns out that Ryan just did a phenomenally good job. So over the last three months, he has earned his way into the seat. So congratulations, Ryan. Really happy to have you here. And I'm happy to not be acting city clerk anymore.
Great.
All right. Well, thank you really much. Really excited, Ryan. I can just tell you as somebody who's taken out an application, I'd done it before, but it'd been four years and I know you haven't done it before for the city side, but you were really helpful. I think probably Shelley and Ingrid could probably echo those comments as well as Ricky, um, and anybody else that took out an application, but you were really helpful with timelines, deadlines, what we needed to do. And I really appreciate that part of it. And I'm looking forward to you taking good votes, keeping us on track because that's now your job.
Yep. And I echo that too. Always getting back to me really quickly and a timely way. And I've heard that from other people too, that Ryan's super responsive and it's great to have him in that role. So congratulations.
Oops, you're on mute.
It looks like you're off mute, but we can't hear you.
Well, and I will say that you guys saw Tanner leaving just a second ago. I think Ryan is getting a brand new computer now. So it may be that we have some setup issues still on his computer if we still can.
Ryan, try to turn up the volume, like the actual physical volume. Sometimes I do that. Nope. Well, depending on if the computer works or not, uh, former acting, uh, city clerk, Steve Boyd, you might still be acting city clerk when it comes to taking votes.
Oh, that's just great.
All right. Well, let's get started. Um, we have, uh, tourism board interviews this evening. Uh, I don't actually have lists of, of questions. Um, so this is not going to be super professional. Um, if, if people have specific questions, I guess let's try to keep it as consistent among the members as possible. Um, knowing that different people have different backgrounds and experience, we can diverge a little bit, but let's, let's try to keep some kind of consistency if we remember and we're, we're able to. We, I believe we have four applicants, I'm sorry, six applicants for four positions. I'm probably going to need, Shelley and I were talking a little bit earlier and, um, Carl, we probably, we might need you to weigh in a little bit or someone to weigh in on who is applying for what specific slot and the appropriateness of that slot, because it's very specific for tourism, unlike the rest of our boards.
Yeah, I actually think that didn't Charlie forward an email that laid all that out? Or, I mean, Deborah, mail of Charlie's that laid out, he was who fit with.
Set out the grid, but I, I can tell you what it is. You have two people applying, Taylor James and Lindsay Ball are applying for the one opening on lodging. Mike, they're victorious. I got a good kill's name is the only applicant for chamber. I'm not sure he's going to be interviewing, but, uh, he's the only applicant there. And then we have Patrick Drake and, um, Heather Montrose Cowan. For though Patrick is the one for the citizen business. And then we have Heather Montrose Cowan and Susan Emery for the position, the citizen non-business notes, so not related to tourism, lodging or restaurant retail. But that's the applicants.
So basically we have four categories that you're filling tonight. Um, you have, there we go.
Thank you, Tony. That's how, that's helpful.
Thanks. Cause I did not think to put that together or pull it up.
So the two competing ones, just so unclear, the two competing ones are, um, Taylor James and Lindsay Ball for the lodging portion?
Correct.
And then the other two competing, potentially competing are, are which, which ones?
Suzanne Emery and Heather Montrose Cowan, and therefore the citizens not directly having a financial interest in the tourism, et cetera, industry. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, my recommendation based on my review and Paul may want to weigh in on this too, is it's my view that we should appoint all six. We point four to regular positions and the other two to alternate, uh, positions. And of course, you have the Patrick, uh, Drake is up for the, uh, citizen business related, but he's the only applicant, so he's up for renewal on that position.
Right. May want to actually interview first, Charlie.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do it before we have the conversation about alternates or just appointing. Uh, Paula, you had your hand up. So what's, what's, and then Shelley.
Yeah, just a, um, couple of things similar to what Charlie was saying, but there's some concerns in general about the tourism board and the, um, number of people dropping off. And I promised the tourism board that we would possibly have a brief discussion and we can do it after we go through the interviews. Um, and, um, and just to clarify, I do believe that, um, Suzanne Stewart, um, who resigned was a citizen, uh, the citizen representative and, um, the way that, uh, I, I believe, and I can't remember, I think it's Heather is her name is, um, applying for the same position that Patrick now holds. It was difficult to read because, um, again, I'm forgetting first names. I think it's Susan Emery, um, put a check mark in two different locations on our application. So there's a little confusion there. Maybe we can clarify that as we go through interviews.
All right. Um, Shelley.
Okay. And, um, Paula, I think you cleared that up because I thought also that I read in Heather's application that she, she was, um, part owner or had an interest in a, in a tourism related business so that that would be part of that with the financial interest. And just to clarify, it, it says on the web's webpage that it's, um, kind of resident business. But the way I read the checkboxes that are in the application, it says, really, we, we have two citizens who are, have no financial interest. So I kind of wanted to have that cleared up because the way it's on the webpage, it shows two resident business, which means seems to imply that they do have financial interest. So if somebody can clarify that, we might want to clear that up before we appoint.
And I got an email from Lisa while we were talking, so she's watching this and she's saying that Heather is a, uh, citizen with a business interest as well. The reason I put it in is not business interest. Maybe Carl can clarify this. Is the way I read the code is they have to have a direct or indirect financial interest. So I perceive that to be an ownership interest, not an employment relationship. Carl, I don't know if it's the other same interpretation.
And in the past, we've always used it as a, as an employment as well as a, an ownership interest.
Okay.
In other words, Christian Henny, for example, uh, to use it as an example, he is not an owner of the Hotel Colorado, but he certainly has an interest in lodging, right? I would not view him as an unrelated citizen.
Well, then in that case, Susan Emery has employment at the, um, Iron Hot Springs and cavern. So we need to keep that in mind.
So she and Patrick would be competing for the position that is a citizen business related and the only applicant for this, the, uh, position and see.
No, Heather and Patrick were competing for the same spot.
Right. For the citizen business interest.
Right.
I think Susan Emery, and I had this another chart written down in front of me, but Susan Emery is, I, I have looked at her. I can't remember her application. She may be the, uh, applicant for the non-business interest.
That is correct, Charlie. That's what her intent was, I believe.
So only have one applicant for that. We have two applicants for the citizen with business interest, two applicants for lodging and then one applicant for change.
So let's, let's, if I may, let's, let's take the one, uh, Taylor James and Lindsay Ball first and second, so that we can kind of compare and contrast and the, kind of be, you know, one of those. And then if whatever one's contested next, um, potentially, because we don't know about alternates, but whatever one might be contested next, just someone tell me and then we'll take those next two people and then we'll do the final two. So with that, has everybody had a chance to, uh, is there any more comments or questions? Okay. Has everybody had a chance to look at the applications cursorily at least? All right. Let's, um, uh, let me bring up the participants and I will promote Taylor James first for the interview. Let's see, I'm going to promote you to a panelist, Taylor. And if you would, uh, be able to turn your camera on as well, that would be nice, but not expected. And you're on mute right now. There you go.
There we go. Sorry about that. Hi, everybody.
No problem. Hi, Taylor. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Fantastic. Uh, we don't, uh, we realized we don't have like, uh, the list of the five standard questions. I think we have, uh, six interviews. We're going to try to keep it like about 10 minutes apiece. So if it feels a little rushed, sorry. Um, it's not that we don't value your time or, or, or opinion or want to know more. We just have a lot of people to get through. So that's, uh, my upfront apology. And let me start off, um, I guess with the question that everybody's probably going to ask is what is your interest in being on the tourism board?
Yeah. So my interest in being on the tourism board is, um, I really want to represent the lodging industry. Um, I'm the marketing manager for Hotel Colorado. So I do have an interest in, in that aspect, I suppose. Um, I've been the marketing manager for about two years now. Um, I did graduate with a bachelor from communications. Um, so I have been in this industry for a little while now. Um, and I would like to represent the lodging industry as a whole for Glenwood Springs. Um, I feel I really could advocate for them as a whole and really see where we could represent them a little bit better and see where, you know, maybe we've been lacking a little or where they feel they could be, um, you know, a little bit, uh, represented better. Um, you know, bring some more tourism to them where they feel maybe they could um, do a little bit better. Um, I think I could do a really good job with that. So.
And folks just jump in with other questions that you have. So, um, to keep the ball rolling, go ahead, Paula.
Taylor, so can you, you spoke about feeling that, um, there might be some gaps. Can you address any of those gaps? And can you talk about, um, you know, have you had any conversations with other hotel, um, employees, owners and, and kind of what their concerns are and what they'd like to see in the future?
So yeah, I haven't yet, but I really do want to get with, um, if I were to be put on the board, uh, with Scott Dyer and kind of see where, where he's at with that and kind of team up with him and work with him to really represent the lodging industry as a whole and, um, really use teamwork to, you know, wrap our heads around it and see where they'd like to be better represented and, you know, see if there's, you know, if they would, you know, kind of feel like, I don't know if there's, you know, a springtime kind of lull that they're feeling or um, if they would, you know, feel better represented if we kind of did some more tourism pushes around that time. Um, just kind of that sort of thing, but I really would like to get with Scott Dyer on that since he is the other lodging seat on the board. So.
Ingrid, go ahead.
So Taylor, you are a lifelong local. How does that make you better fit for the board or not even better? But what do you bring to the board because of that background?
I think I have a vested interest in seeing, um, not just the lodging industry, but Glenwood Springs as a whole, uh, succeed in bringing tourism to our town. Um, I'm, I've seen personally, you know, that that is what we pretty much all rely on. I have, you know, personal interests in not only where I work, but friends, family, um, you know, just everyone I know pretty much relies on that tourism to succeed and to, um, you know, make a living. And so it really is a personal interest of mine to see that tourism keep coming and be sustain, sustainable for our entire town to um, keep going for years to come and, um, grow and continue to grow. So.
And, and I'll also add that I have the luxury of seeing your social media posts, which are engaging and, and very, you know, on point. What are trends that you think are coming up in that industry that you think, and this is not a trick question, but that you are excited to bring to the tourism, just ideas. Do you have anything that you're like, oh yeah, I'd love to see more of this or anything along those lines?
Um, so that's a little bit of a tricky question. You know, it's been a little hard to navigate this year, especially with COVID and everything. Um, I think it's been a little bit of walking a fine line, um, especially with social media, trying to engage with everyone while not offending anyone, you know, trying to push tourism while also not, um, uh, you know, pushing it too hard and making everyone feel like, you know, we're promoting too much leisure, leisure travel. Um, obviously we want everything to be safe and everyone to be safe, but I do feel like, um, especially this summer, things are going to start opening back up a little bit here and there safely, especially with the vaccine. So I think that especially social media wise, we're going to be able to start pushing things a little bit more. Um, pushing a little bit more travel, especially outdoors. Glenwood has a lot to offer in that aspect. So that's going to be really as far as Hotel Colorado building industry and Glenwood Springs as a whole. So.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. And it is, it has been such, such uncharted territory. I think your skillset in your department, that's, that's definitely been some, some challenge. So well done.
Thank you.
All right. And, and I just have to say, we got started a little bit late with everybody as we kind of worked through different, uh, mechanisms of who was applying for what and what we were doing. So we only have on my clock, 25 more minutes to get through this interview and five others. So Charlie.
Just quick question. Um, Taylor, I don't know if you heard why we were discussing the beginning, but we have two applicants in this position. I think you're very well qualified. And the other position, the, the person is also well qualified. Would you be interested in serving as an alternative member, which means you're, if they need a vacancy, you get to vote. Not, you would be there and be able to give input, but not vote. Would you be interested in a position like that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, um, you know, applying for this position, um, I really am just doing it because I want to support, you know, Glenwood Springs and bringing tourism here in any way I can. So if that's the best way I can do that, then absolutely.
All right. Any other questions for Taylor?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay. Um, Taylor, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I wish we had more time allocated. That's probably my fault that we didn't set aside enough time, uh, for all the candidates, but, um, thank you very much for applying regardless of whether decision, uh, we, we come to. Thanks for participating and putting your name out there for sure.
Thank you guys for your time.
All right. Have a good evening and I believe we're going to make the appointment at the next meeting. So, um, we'll be doing that at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. All right. Up next, uh, Lindsay Ball, I'll promote you to a panelist. There you are. If you're able to turn on your mic and your video, that'd be great.
Jonathan, just a quick question. It is on our agenda for later tonight to.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Are we doing that tonight or are we going to postpone it?
No, we should do it tonight. Sorry.
Okay.
Hi, Lindsay. How you doing?
I am well. Thank you. How are you?
Fantastic. Hey, we, uh, probably have kind of a tight, uh, schedule tonight. So we have about five minutes. So we'll try to keep our questions short and succinct. Welcome. Thank you very much for applying, Lindsay. Uh, just kick us off. What is your interest in, uh, serving on the tourism board?
Well, I have quite an extensive amount of experience in the lodging portion of the hospitality industry. It's actually, um, where I kind of grew up. And the pool is very, very new to me. So I'm very familiar with the lodging portion of, of hospitality. So I'm excited to bring that experience to, um, to the board. Um, I really have an invested interest in Glenwood Springs. I grew up here, Glenwood Castle and Pool, and I'm very excited to represent the Glenwood Hot Springs Resort in, um, in this, um, in this arena and in this capacity as we, we do have a lot, um, a lot of, um, guests that come to stay with us that want to see Glenwood, but also want to see a larger part of the area too. So excited to be a part of it.
Awesome. Go ahead, Paula.
Hi Lindsay, how are you? Long time.
I'm well. Good to see you.
Um, hey, um, I'm going to ask you a similar question that I asked earlier. Where do you feel our, um, where do you feel the rest of the hotel community feels there are gaps and how would you help address it for the whole hotel community? Um, and, and what their needs are right now, not just the hot springs pool.
Of course. Well, I think driving, you know, occupancy levels and maintaining your ADR and apparently being a part of a comp set that is, is, is growing. And I think that we are very competitive with a lot of the area hotels and, but also as the influx comes down from Aspen to the salt to Glenwood, I mean, we're seeing significantly. I think a different guest than what we saw before, um, in Glenwood, especially from when I was younger. Um, what we can definitely attribute that to, like, we just got a Rocky Mountain near contract, which is very exciting. And I think that that's a wonderful way to promote new business and new growth to Glenwood. Also, you know, working with, um, just different entities to promote, um, an elevated status and, and really just looking to, um, to envision kind of what we are, we're doing to grow Glenwood and truly promote Glenwood, um, as a, as a, as a beautiful place to come vacation.
And, and how do you, um, pull that, um, so that we're talking about the whole community in this position, you know, you're, you're representing not just the pool.
Of course.
The highway six and 24 motels.
Yes.
Meadows.
Absolutely. Absolutely. No, and you're absolutely right. Very important, I think, to work together collectively, collectively to, um, to maintain Glenwood as a, as a location where we have multiple opportunities for people to stay. And, um, working together to really drive home, um, the, um, the, the overall, um, sorry, really to try and just drive home the idea that we can work collectively together to promote the hospitality industry.
Great. Thanks.
Go ahead, Charlie.
And Lindsay, a question I'm going to ask you is the same thing that I asked Taylor, and that is, um, you have two qualified applicants. If we appointed you to be an alternate with that, except for would you still be willing to participate at the tourism board as an alternate?
Of course I would. Absolutely.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Tony, did you have your hand up? No. Okay. Shelley.
Just one quick question. Lindsay, you mentioned our, the visitor kind of demographic shifting and changing. Can you explain that a little bit and just tell us what you're seeing?
Of course. Absolutely. So I think that the drive market obviously from, um, Denver is what we're seeing a lot of, uh, definitely promoting to the Denver area. I'm doing a lot with Grand Junction and also doing a lot with, um, Southern Colorado. I think that the idea that you can kind of make that whole loop, the scenic byway and really get to see all of these mountain towns in Colorado promoting to areas where that, um, that visual and that media is really reflected. Um, I think you're seeing a lot of more, um, week over week bookings. And so you really need to look to, you know, who you're promoting to. I think we're seeing a lot of higher, higher room rate drive, even though with the, excuse me, that shorter window booking, people are booking last minute and they're coming to stay because they're making that immediate decision to go. And I think that, um, making sure that we are rolling with that as a new mentality, especially after what happened with COVID. It makes a lot of sense to kind of analyze that market and to make sure that you're, you're really, um, our guests aren't booking months out in advance anymore. Unfortunately, so you really have to be reflective of that.
Any other questions for Lindsay? Lindsay, do you have any questions for us?
Not at this time. No, sir.
All right. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. Again, I wish we could have dedicated a little bit more time to us, but, um, you're, I think your, uh, application and your interview speak for itself. So, uh, I guess we'll be signing tonight and, uh, we appreciate, um, the time you've taken to, to go this far with us.
Of course. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Next, uh, Charlie, who do we want to do next?
Well, the other contested position is the citizen business. That'd be Patrick Drake and, um, sorry, I'm looking at a, one of the application. We'll get back to my main thing here. Um, Patrick Drake and Heather Montrose Cowan are the two for that. That's the other contested position.
Okay. Patrick Drake, you are up.
How are you guys?
Fantastic. Uh, yeah, we, we, and again, I said this to the other folks too, but we're kind of tight on time tonight. So it's not going to be the half hour interview that you, you might've had, uh, the first time you did this three years ago. But again, thank you for your service for the three years that you have put in. Um, thank you very much for your continued interest. And, uh, with that all said, what, uh, Patrick, are some of the reasons that you want to continue uh, to serve up another three years of your life to this board?
Yeah. Um, first off, I apologize for my attire. I got stuck at work a little bit and we're kind of short, uh, stepping wide. So, um, so yeah, definitely over the, the last three years, um, been very dedicated to it. So lifelong, uh, resident of Glenwood Springs. Own, or owner of multiple businesses in Glenwood. And obviously, um, if we're speaking right now, uh, I think with COVID and, uh, the accommodations tax being down this year, I think there's, there, we basically have to do more with less. And, you know, there's, there's a good amount of work ahead. Very excited to, to hopefully continue that, um, hopefully continue big growth that we've seen in the past three years and, and see that into the future.
Uh, other questions? Go ahead, Paula.
Hey, Patrick. Um, it's been great sitting on the board with you as the council liaison. Um, just quick, you know, if you have any, um, gaps that you think we might be looking at in the next year or so that we should address, especially due to COVID, is there like a, um, post-COVID response that might be helpful for tourism businesses other than the hotel and restaurant industry that, um, that you can think of at this point?
Yeah. Well, um, likewise, definitely great working with you as well. And, you know, I think consciously we have made choices where we're definitely, um, trying to target the return customer, uh, to Glenwood Springs. It's a little easier to market to, probably get a little bit better return on that marketing. And it is the glide driving clientele. So I think that's, you know, the, the focus or the shift from looking at markets outside the area like the Dallas, Chicago. from looking at markets outside the area like the Dallas, Chicago areas like were pre-COVID. It definitely shifts to getting it more localized. And thankfully, we offer so many wonderful things that it kind of advertises itself. So reaching that market to the greatest capacity would be the goal.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks. Charlie.
Thanks, Patrick. I also want to thank you for serving on the board for the last three years. And a good thing about your work on the board, is there anything that you think that you would do different in the next three years than you've done the last three years as far as being on the board?
No, just remain as involved as possible. I know as, as we do have board positions rotating and opening up, obviously would love to be available for, for any of those positions or opportunities. And really just continue to stay as dedicated as, as shown. And yeah, working with the collective group, the collective board. It's always some great brainstorming that takes place and just constantly be active process, part of the conversation.
And as, as a current board member, do you think if we appointed a couple of alternates, how would it be helpful to the board's overall functioning?
Um, yeah, I had, had not previously thought about it. But, uh, you know, there's, there's good candidates available for the board positions and alternatives. I would say that'd be a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions for Patrick? Okay. Well, I appreciate Patrick. I think we, again, it's very short time and I apologize. We weren't able to give you more time, but we're trying to run through these pretty quickly. But we do know you because you've been on this board for three years. Your application's great. And, you know, this is the second time at least Shelley and I have sat through your interview. So I think even, and, and Paula and Ingrid have sat with you. So I think we have a fairly good idea of who you are. So do you have any questions for us?
No, I really appreciate your time. Thank you guys very much.
Thanks so much, Patrick.
Take care.
Next, Charlie, did you say we're doing Heather Montross Cohen? Okay. Heather, I'm going to promote you to panelist here. All right, Heather, if you're able to turn on your mic and your camera. Hello.
Hi. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, for this opportunity to sit before you today. I'm not known to, to the members. So thank you so much for, for bringing me forward to share a little bit.
Absolutely. And I think if we had a couple more minutes, we probably want to give it to somebody that we don't have that experience too. So if people have more questions, because we don't have a familiarity with Ms. Montross Cohen, then, you know, let's, let's take a little bit of extra time. So welcome. Thank you very much for putting your time in for the application, for making time for this interview process this afternoon. I'll just kick it off. What is your interest or background that has led you to apply for tourism?
Yeah, great. Thank you. And just to clarify, I, I moved to Glenwood Springs about four years ago this summer. And part of that move was because my husband and I acquired Rock Gardens Rafting, which is now Defiance Rafting Company in No Name. So I am a co-owner of Defiance Rafting Company and also a resident of Glenwood Springs. So really the catalyst of applying for the Tourism Promotion Board, and at this time was really after the Grizzly Creek Fire. So certainly the impact of, of that in the canyon and for us specifically, and the entire community was significant and really brought forward the awareness that tourism is very important and how we promote that is very important. I'm also a stakeholder in the rec industry, the rec community and economy here in Glenwood Springs. So bringing forward that perspective, being owner operator, I'm boots on the ground every day, talking to guests. At one time across the globe, but across the country and certainly within Colorado every day about how amazing Glenwood Springs is. That's why I'm here. I think that's why we're all here is because we love Glenwood Springs and want to serve the community. And lastly, I think it's just being able to give back to the community and serve on, on the board is an opportunity for me to give back to the community. So that's, that's what's brought me here today.
Awesome. Thank you. That's a pretty good introduction. I have a question and then Paula, while you jump in. What, what gaps do you see in Glenwood Springs, whether it be lodging or camping or activities that we're, we're close to, but we're kind of missing out on?
Yeah. What I find talking with guests is often they come here for one reason or they think they're coming here for one reason and really learning that there's so much more to do while they're here. So maybe they come to hike Hanging Lake, for example, and end up realizing that there's hot springs, there's caverns, there's rafting, hiking, biking, all of that. And I think just really making sure that we're letting those guests know that there's so much to do in the area. And I think what's great about our area, our area and during a time of COVID is that so much to do outside and that really aligns well with social distancing and other restrictions that we may have. I also see, and I know that it's, it's come up, but kind of low, marketing more local. I'm from Fort Collins. I'm a front ranger. I came here because I lived for the, I was living for the weekends and wanting to have more of a lifestyle. And so I think also tapping in that this is a lifestyle community, that people who live here, this is, we play outside. This is what we do. We play and work here. And really looking at, for the front rangers, that Glenwood is an extension of their backyard. It's easy to get here. Come here often. We have lots to do.
Awesome. Thank you. Paula, go ahead.
We go back and forth on that unmute button. It's nice to meet you. Excited to meet you, actually. It's, it's great to hear that you and your husband came in and bought the Rock Gardens and renamed it. Fits well for our community. Obviously with you owning an outdoor business, you know, you have your own marketing tools. Is there anything that you see as in specific to tools to do outreach that you'd like to see the Tourism Board and, and their efforts in marketing kind of take on? Maybe something that you haven't seen yet, or even if you're not aware of it, I would just be curious on what you would do that might be different.
Yeah, we're finding, and again, this is, as the world has changed since COVID, is that finding that some people are, and now this isn't for everyone, but some people might be hesitant picking up more kind of print ads, media. And so really we're focused on for our business, how do we get out there? And using some digital tools that even when people are kind of driving through the area or within the area that we're popping up. And so maybe they hadn't considered stopping in Glenwood Springs or they were going to drive past No Name and then we pop up of, oh, like you can go rafting right here at this exit 119. Is, is kind of been a quick way to capture tourists coming in the area or passing through the area. Stay and play for a little while. Maybe you don't have a lot of time, but a little while. And what activities can you do in a short time? So tapping into some of that has been helpful in, in kind of the, the digital world and digital marketing that way. So that's one, one area that we've been focusing on that I could see helpful for Glenwood, being at this kind of corridor of pass, you know, pass through kind of place.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Ingrid, I'll let you finish up with the last question.
Okay, perfect. Hi, Heather. Thank you so much for applying. Yeah. And well, I mean, it's not totally a welcome, but four years in, it's great to have you as part of our community. I have one quick question. It's kind of a new question with this round of tourism applications. And that is, in the event that we appoint alternates, would you be receptive to being an alternate on the Tourism Board?
I would be more than happy and honored to be an alternate. I really believe the current board members are doing a tremendous job and really community engagement, community involvement is part of what I am, what's really important to me. So for me, it's about getting in front of you, introducing myself and being involved. And being an alternate would be wonderful.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that response and all of the, just your energy and enthusiasm about being on board.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Heather. We really appreciate you putting the time, effort and energy. Again, sorry, the interview is, is relatively short. But I think we got a good idea about who you are from this interview and your application and will be making some decisions this evening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, for, let's do. Yep. There we go. Susan, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Hello?
Hi, there you are. Susan, are you able to turn your video on by any chance?
Yes, sorry about that.
Oh, no, no problem.
Can you guys see me now?
No. Well, I'll tell you what, as you're kind of working your way through that, I will just say, if you're able to get on, that's great. If not, it's not a deal breaker.
There I am. Hi.
Hi. Nice, very nice pastel background. That's great.
Thank you.
We are kind of running short on time. Technically, we have three minutes. We'll give you more than three minutes. But thank you very much for applying, taking the time and effort to put your application in for, to make time for this interview this evening, afternoon. And first question I guess I have for you is what is your interest in the Tourism Board? And what in your background has led you to want to apply for, for this position?
Sure. So I am a 30-year resident of Glenwood Springs and a homeowner of Glenwood Springs for those 30 years. And like everybody else that we've talked about, you know, I love the town and I'm very involved with the community and within networks of mine within the community. I'm a, one of the original members of the Glenwood Springs Citizens Alliance. So just want to contribute. I do believe that tourism is a big part of the success for all within Glenwood Springs. And my experience, past, present, and I think future would lend tremendously to the Tourism Board for the city of Glenwood Springs.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Paula, go ahead.
Hi, how are you, Suzanne?
Great. Thank you.
Good. Sorry. Of course I'm going to cough right now. So on your application, and it's confusing for the council as well, you marked two different things. And I read through and it sounds like that you work for Iron Hot Springs and the Glenwood Caverns, but you're not in an ownership position. And so the whole thing is a little confusing to me. And, and I think what you want to do is come in as a citizen. So just a little clarity on, you know, how you feel your perspective as a citizen would be represented on the board. And then going back a little bit to your depth and breadth of marketing, what do you think you could bring to the board that might be a gap or missing or enhance what's currently being done? So two questions.
Sure. So, um, right, the, I am applying as a citizen. And again, with my longstanding in Glenwood Springs, and I've had various employment primarily within the last 30 years, been employed either with or within the tourism industry, primarily hospitality. So my experience is vast and I've worked with hospitality from Summit County through Glenwood Springs, Aspen, Snowmass, and then well into Grand Junction. So that's given me an opportunity to really have a handle on what other resorts and areas are doing. And by bringing that to the city of Glenwood Springs, you know, I just, I feel like a region where people want to come and visit and tourism is a collaborative effort, regardless of whether it's resort-specific or within a region. But with my current capacity and working in this large region, I think it would lend again to the board and bring perspective regionally for growth. Yeah. And I, I really would like to see collaborative efforts within different resorts in Glenwood Springs. Because like some of the other candidates were saying, you know, we're, we're sort of feeding off each other right now. And just during COVID, we're definitely feeding off the drive market and people coming from within Colorado or borders that are close to Colorado. So for all of us to sort of come together and see that we, you know, together we could work better and stronger. I would love to, to be a part of that.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions? I'll, I'll ask the, the question we've been asking everybody. But if we did appoint an alternate, Suzanne, would you be willing to fill in that role versus a full board member immediately?
Sure. I would love to. It'd be an honor.
Okay. Other questions? I'll, I'll throw one out there. Suzanne, what, what mix of, you know, we have a lot of tourism-based businesses of wide diversity and variety. What is something that we're missing, whether it be lodging inventory, whether it be activity inventory that, that we're just kind of missing the boat on?
Well, I think I lost internet, but I think Heather sort of touched on it in that I think we have a, a great base and I think that we're well-rounded. But I, people do come into town and they, they don't know everything Glenwood Springs has to offer. So there is so many offerings locally that will appease anybody. I mean, we can take any kind of tourist and have this, they can have a great experience in Glenwood Springs. And we also, with the I-70 corridor, I, I really believe that people are traveling from Denver to Moab and that'll be part of that train as well. But to, to capture those people that are traveling along I-70 and get them to pull off in Glenwood Springs and get them to stay for a couple of nights and make Glenwood Springs part of that trip that they're making from east to west along the I-70 corridor. I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
Awesome. Shelley, we're running out of time, but I will give you the last question.
Okay. And thank you.
Oh, hold on.
You're muted.
Did you mute me, Jonathan?
I, you know, I was trying to lower your hand. I have fat fingers. So I think that's what I did. I apologize.
I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity. If you're applying for the position that is a resident with no financial interest, but you, do you work, are you working with Iron Mountain or are you a contractor with them? Or how does, what's that relationship?
I am employed by Glenwood Caverns Adventure Park and Iron Mountain Hot Springs.
Okay, but you're not intending on the board to be their representative?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Suzanne.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. Suzanne, sorry, again, that we didn't have more time to give you a more comprehensive professional interview process.
Appreciate what you gave me. I, I really do.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah, we, we, we run through things a little too quick, but we thank you for your time. Thank you for sitting with us and we will be making it. sitting with us and we will be making a decision tonight later on in the agenda.
That sounds great. Well, thank you then. Look forward to hearing from you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I do not see Mike. Go ahead, Paula, did you have a, did you, okay. I don't see Mike, so assuming that Mike is not on here, I think we're concluded the interviews for now.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
The chamber appointment, is the chamber appointment someone who is currently on the chamber board or someone that the chamber is recommending? Which one is it?
I believe it's the second of that. They don't necessarily have to be on the board to be appointed or suggested or referred by the chamber. Is that your understanding as well? Charlie, I saw you nodding your head or shaking your head.
Yeah, let me look again. I just.
My understanding was they were, they were a member of the chamber. I don't know if they have to be on the board of the chamber, but my understanding was they have to be a member of the chamber.
The code says a representative with the Glenwood Springs Chamber Resort Association. I mean, Carl can interpret what that means.
And I think historically they've always been a member of the chamber. As most people are, would be recommended by the chamber would be. But I, I don't think the code prohibits the chamber from recommending somebody who is not a member of the chamber. But I'd be surprised.
And, and not to dilute the concept of interviews, but why even have an interview if we are not being recommended at least two people from the chamber? Is that something that we have historically done or do they just always throw out one person?
You know, that I can't answer Ingrid on whether they've thrown out more than one in the past before. I think it's more of a courtesy to, so at least you have some contact with that person that you might be appointing to that position.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for the clarity.
So I think, I think, I think we have a lot, we'll have more questions, but we're gonna be talking about it tonight on the agenda as well. So as far as like number peoples and where did, so can we save your question for later?
Well, I was just using Mike's interview time to ask some questions.
Oh.
Didn't show up.
Technically, we could have started seven minutes ago with the members from the Transportation Commission.
I'm just giving you a hard time. We're good. Let's move on.
Well, and I, I am sure that Mike was, Mike's on the board unless he just dropped off. He's on the chamber board. He's listed.
Yeah, I mean, as a, just an interview and whether or not, I just wanted some clarity on how the chamber chooses a representative to kind of put in front of us.
And I would say let's have further conversation on all of that stuff tonight because we have our Transportation Commission waiting patiently and
Yeah, let's move on, Mr. Mayor.
Davis just joined us.
All right. Did he?
Hi, sorry I'm late.
You look cold Steve.
No, I am warm.
Okay.
Good.
All right. I think I promoted everybody on the Transportation Commission to panelists. So folks, if you want to, if you feel comfortable anyway, turning on your camera, that's fantastic. Hi. Hello, Mr. Gavrell, Mr. Lowell, Mr. Smith, Barger, Stevens. All right. Ah. Well, I'm getting up the agenda items. Today we're talking about, is it TDM? Is that the rest of our conversation this evening?
That's the big part of it.
Okay. Who is, it's not me. Who's leading this conversation?
Is Sandy on here? I'm on. I was muted. That's probably a good place for me, but you know. What can you say? Yeah, so TDM is gonna, we're gonna, we've got some introductions that I thought we ought to maybe let you know who is on the Transportation Commission and some of their qualifications because we have a pretty passionate group with a lot of expertise.
So just, just so we're clear, we have about 51 minutes and
Got it.
We can go over a little bit, but just so everybody is kind of clear on the timeframe we have.
Got it. We're gonna be quick with that. I'll introduce the commission members. Steve will go over our accomplishments last year and then we'll get into the meat of what we would like to do in 2021. So the met, we got, we have seven members commission and I guess first I, you know, is Sandy Lowell and me and I'm a education, a civil engineer by education at CU. Work construction and actually what brought me here is 30 years selling caterpillar equipment. And we have Lee Barger, who has 25 years experience in transportation engineering, including extensive work in bridges, underpasses, roundabouts, interchanges, facilities for bicycles, for transit, especially interested in promoting transportation demand management and regional approach to the transportation planning. Next, we have Robert Gavrell, a partner attorney at Balcom and Green specializing in civil litigation, seeking a common sense improvements to the transit efficiencies and improve regulations for parking and traffic. We have Roger Poirier, who is not on the call. He's a strategic recreation planner for the White River National Forest and supports pragmatic traffic and transit solutions to promote walkable communities. Steve Smith is a former US Congressional Staff Member on Environment and Transportation. And he's a coordinator for Glenwood Springs Bicycle Advocates. And John Stevens is a former middle school teacher, leader in local and regional service club work. And he's an avid bicyclist. He's particularly interested in data-driven design and planning to reduce traffic impacts. John's our facts guy. He likes facts and he can dig them up. And then Ralph Trapani has 45 years experience in transportation planning and engineering, including 27 years at CDOT. And he managed the construction of the I-70 through Glenwood Canyon for CDOT. This shale bluff stabilization, Roaring Fork Valley multimodal innovations, among many others. He's now the senior independent consultant on major transportation projects nationwide and is interested in local mobility solutions to minimize motor traffic. So that's us. And Steve, if you, quick rundown of what we did last year?
Can I, can I?
Thank you council members for taking the time with us.
Steve. I'm sorry. Deborah had her hand up. She wanted to interject something very quickly.
I think the idea was to make sure we let Linda also do her TDM presentation.
Yes.
Towards the front of this. So we gotta pull her over along with Terry. Just so I think it will help the whole conversation to give our baseline.
Linda's in there.
Okay, am I going?
Yeah, you're on Linda and I need to share your screen with your presentation.
Yeah, I got it. I just hit share screen.
And I think that
We have this coordinated. Ralph has this coordinated with Linda and
Linda, before we do that, we have a few more things to cover.
Okay. I'll hang.
And so if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll get rundown our work for the previous year as Sandy suggested. I'm Steve Smith. During 2020, the Transportation Commission, as always, delivered an annual update of recommendations for the council's ranking of small and large transportation capital projects. In an emerging role for the commission, we also reviewed development proposals with transportation effects, including especially effects of traffic, bicycle, pedestrian and transit components of the Bell Rippe Development Proposal and the whole implications that that has for Blake Avenue and Palmer Avenue. We offered some comments on, on those. We commented extensively engaged, engaged in the MOVE study of bus rapid transit options, emphasizing the importance of better integrating RFTA with local transit and with community values. We submitted a refined list of bicycle pedestrian improvements for the South Midland Reconstruction Project. We, we organized ourselves for the first time into a series of subcommittees with members distributed among a committee on transit, a committee on parking and a committee on bicycle pedestrian issues, all feeding the commission's comprehensive efforts as reflected in the vision statement that we delivered into your packet with our primary emphasis, our primary purpose or sense of purpose of reducing the growth in motor traffic in town and to make transportation an enhancement of community values. To that end, we created a draft transportation demand management initiative. Subject of Ralph's presentation in a little bit and Linda's show here in a minute as a way to kind of screen and guide the advice that we try to cobble together for the council. And we began discussion of the idea of using the commission as a formal referral agent for certain projects. Sandy, do you want me to run down the upcomings? Are you gonna take over?
So, so yeah, real quickly, we're about ready to get into TDM. We're gonna, for next year, we're gonna continue the small and large capital project review. And then Rob, do you want to introduce Ralph and kind of give a little summary on how we got into looking at TDM and thinking, pretty major deal?
I'd be happy to. And just in great brief detail, I'm sure council is aware of the MOVE study. It's a joint study initiated both by RFTA and the city whose goal was to take a comprehensive look at all the traffic issues facing the town with the goal of improving the situation. We have traffic problem on grand and we have lots of room for improvement. The MOVE study was a joint project intended to look at all of that. As we, the commission started looking at the MOVE studies parameters, though, there was one thing that struck us that have led us down a different path, looking at TDM. And that is that while it looks at traffic issues comprehensively at Glenwood Springs, it had embedded in it already an outcome that it assumed must be a necessary component. That would be a BRT extension to downtown and a transit center downtown, which left us scratching our head if the overall study revealed that that really wasn't something that was going to help. We see the transit, transit issues in Glenwood Springs being primarily commuters west of town trying to get through us, commuters west of town trying to get to us. And then Glenwood Springs residents without a very effective, we think, ride Glenwood Springs system, not able to get around easily in town. We don't see a great benefit of extending BRT just to downtown with a transit center there. We do see a great benefit of extending BRT to West Glenwood. And that a hogback route bringing people in from West Glenwood intersecting with an effective BRT route that would pick them up west of town so they don't drive their cars into town. It seems to us to be a great benefit and a great deal less expensive than some of the options the MOVE study foresaw. One of them including by building a giant busway on the Rio Grande Trail. Another one being a reconfiguring grand to remove some of the parking and allow for more bus lanes. Those may be things that we need to do at some point, but our, our goals and our vision brought us to think about what are all the things we can do that don't cost millions and millions of dollars that can change things for the better in our town right now. And so MOVE was helpful to us by letting us have those talks. And also there's parts of MOVE, which I know is concluding that seem very effective. There's a whole parking component in MOVE that's really innovative that we think when it's built out could be a great benefit. There's also some great ideas for right limit springs and we hope that council looks at those things. But before we talk about large infrastructure projects, we're much more interested in moving our focus to less expensive things like transportation demand management. And that is my segue to Ralph Trapani, who's going to be talking about the overall vision that we've put together for you in your pack. Thank you.
Well, great. Thank you, Rob, and good afternoon, everybody. I appreciate the, the commission appreciates the opportunity to present to the council today. I'm just gonna briefly remind everybody how transportation demand management saved our bacon for the Grand Avenue Bridge. We collectively reduced traffic 25% in Glenwood Springs and it was transportation demand management. So we've actually got a very good history down here at the bottom end of the valley. The upper end of the valley, the transportation demand management programs at the city of Aspen and Picken County and others have been operating since the mid 90s have been tremendously successful. And we think there's some opportunities here to tie all this together. So the way we're gonna do our TDM this afternoon is I'm through my introduction now. I want to spend just a minute with John Stevens and talk about a list of transit questions we developed. Then I'm gonna turn it over to Linda for the TDM slideshow and we'll wrap up the, that part of the agenda with a little present, a short summary of the TDM document that the commission prepared for the council. So I'm not sure if, I'm sorry, I didn't have time to look at the packet, but there is a list of transit questions in the packet that were developed by John Stevens. He's sort of been keeping very well a running kind of list of questions that have been popping up, whether it was through the subcommittee meetings, through our MOVE meetings or just because John's a fact-based man, things that he's seen and observed that he's got some questions on. John, you want to talk a little more about the genesis of that?
I can. It would be helpful if Linda took away the, her her screen, her screen so I can put mine up.
That work?
Not yet.
Your screen sharing. Oh, stop share. There we go.
Sure. Okay, I'm gonna share mine. And hopefully I can find it. Yes, here we go. So I have a brief PowerPoint. You have in your you have in your packet a document entitled Transportation Commission Move Questions. I'm going to give you a condensed version of those of those questions. And these arose out of the commission's work with city staff with RFTA, looking at the move issues. And as we expanded into looking at more general transit issues, we had some that were related directly to the MOVE study and some questions that are related to really some broader issues and some requests for information and for data. I would emphasize that these are questions for city staff and RFTA staff to work on. It should be most of it very readily available information. And there's actually only one question in here that's specific to city staff. So it's divided into three areas. One is some questions regarding the extension of BRT service route. And it's still not clear whether it extends to West Glenwood or is going to terminate in downtown Glenwood as Rob referenced. So we need a clear definition of that. And we also need clear definition of what the frequency might be when it is extended and also whether one of the alternative routes being chosen would impact the frequency of BRT service. So those are questions for RFTA to answer. In terms of local bus service, we are expecting RFTA to take over the current ride Glenwood service on Highway 6 and 24 north of the river. Again, we need to know exactly what that route is going to be and what the frequency of services. And related to that, the 2018 Transit Operations Plan for Glenwood Springs recommended consideration of moving the West Glenwood Transit Hub to the West Glenwood Mall area rather than the rather isolated West Glenwood Park and Ride. So asking RFTA for considering that. And finally, the question for city staff, currently ride Glenwood Springs is funded by a 0.2% transportation sales tax. And the question is, can this funding be used for other transit purposes? A revised ride Glenwood, an on-demand service, whatever. So that's a question for staff to determine. Really important in any plan for transportation is looking at where commuters are coming from, where are they going? The RFTA 2014 Travel Patterns Study has some really good information in it. It's somewhat outdated. We're asking if RFTA has any more up-to-date origin destination information and also asking what plans they have for improving service from West Glenwood to better target intercepting single occupancy vehicle traffic before it leaves Newcastle or enters downtown Glenwood. So those are the questions we have. What are the next steps? And finally, commission does request with the concurrence of the city council that RFTA and city staff answer these questions and provide written answers to us by our, our next commission meeting in early March. And back to Ralph.
Great. Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Well, very good. And we're gonna keep on schedule here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me? Okay.
We, we
Um. Um. So how about if we put Linda's show back up again and let her go through her TDM slideshow at this point? You ready, Linda?
Yep. Uh oh. Can you guys see it?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yes.
Here we are. So some definitions by way of background for those who don't know. One definition of TDM, a set of strategies aimed at maximizing traveler choices as an alternative to just building more roads or widening roads. CDOT's 2019 TDM plan, which informed a lot of this presentation, has the definition of application of strategy and policies to reduce motor vehicle travel demand or to redistribute this demand in time, which refers to variable work hours and telecommuting. Finally, back in 2004, the FHWA predicted that in our, in the 21st century, strategies to manage demand will be more critical than just increasing capacity. In other words, instead of building more roads, making more efficient use of the ones that we already have. And this just shows kind of the bad news. On the left is 2011. On the right, 2040, all the thick red and orange blotches are increased traffic. And you can see that red and orange all along I-70 corridor and heading down 82. Core strategies of TDM are transit, van pulls, car pulls, walking and bicycling, and e-scooters as discreet trips in themselves and also maximizing those modes for connecting to transit, variable work hours, and telecommuting, which we all know a lot about now in the age of COVID. The strategies that would support those mode shifts, meaning a mode is what method of travel you choose and changing that from single occupant vehicle to something else, rideshare matching, parking management, including charging for parking at, at work sites, incentives offered to people that choose other transportation modes, marketing education, market-based, which means you start charging for, if you're in a, if you're in, if you choose to travel in a car during a congested time period, you get charged more for that privilege. Intelligent transportation systems, meaning smart cards and latest technology, app-based mobility as a service is kind of a new thing. An example would be a tourist who comes to Glenwood, parks their car in the motel district, fires up their, their smartphone. They pick the Glenwood Springs Travel App and it can show them when the bus is coming, where there's a bike share bike available, where there's a scooter available if we decide to have that. They can sign up to pay for all those services and get their entire trip planned on their phone right there. And then finally, creating more, more safe, connected infrastructure for bicycling, walking, and transit. Specific travel markets that TDM can benefit are employer-based, meaning just work sites. Those can be very small. One employer, maybe City of Glenwood. By ourselves, we try this first and then can be scaled to much bigger, bigger corporate campuses, which we don't really have much of that. Schools, universities, recreation and tourism, construction mitigation, the wonderful success of the Grand Avenue Bridge Construction TDM that Ralph just mentioned. Airport shuttles, crash and incident management, like we experienced last summer when the freeway was closed due to the fire and freight. So one of the reasons that we don't sort of organically have a comprehensive TDM in this region is that we are not part of an MPO, which is the transportation planning governance model used in the US that governs a lot of how federal money comes down to the local level. We don't have a city of at least 50 million population, so we don't qualify for the advantages that MPOs have, which is a governance body, higher federal funding, planning and staffing requirements. For example, the Denver region MPO has four, four full-time staffers working just on TDM. And then we also are not under a lot of air quality regulations since we're not in an MPO. Here is just a brief look at the five MPOs that exist in Colorado. The closest one to us is Grand Junction. What we are part of is a small rural planning region in Colorado. They're just called TPRs. We are part of the Intermountain TPR. We don't have a big city. A lot of those federal planning requirements and opportunities don't apply to us. We're not really governed as a region. And so we get less federal funding and less sort of a natural way to create programs like TDM. But we can choose to work cooperatively to create TDM programs. So our Intermountain TPR that we're a part of, we're the biggest one in Colorado, and it includes these five counties. And there is a visual sort of view of how the MPOs and TPRs are situated in the state. So on the left column here, this shows all the strategies that have been successful, very successful in Denver and Boulder and the Denver cog, the MPO up there. Next to it shows that we're doing pretty well. We're doing better than even some of the, the other MPOs in the state. And these are just all the examples of TDM methods that have been used here. A lot of those are attributed to Aspen and a lot were used in the Grand Avenue Bridge. I talked to CDOT this past week to their TDM people and they told me that Glenwood is quite famous for how well it handled TDM during the Grand Avenue Bridge construction. The top two lines of this refer to the national total of people who drive alone to work every day at 76.4 and then the Colorado total, 75.3. But as you stretch down to the bottom, you can see the success that Colorado has had. Denver's way down at 70.3, Boulder at 52.5, and downtown Denver has been very aggressive and successful. And their drive alone rate is only 38.5. Another interesting thing about the next slide here showing the smaller TPRs. Here we are at the top. We're about in third place of all the TPRs of being the best at reducing our drive alone. We're behind Gunnison in the Northwest up there, Route County, which has quite a lot of programs. This is something I was quite surprised to see. In our region, more people carpool to work than take transit. That was really unexpected and I'm going to do some more research on that because I'm just pretty surprised by that. So to implement successful TDM, you can't just sort of wring your hands at how bad traffic is and sort of wish things would change. You have to set really concrete goals and then create strategies and measure those goals each year to see how you're doing. Three examples are the Denver cog. These show their goals. The top two are about reducing work trips and to 65% by 2035 and then also reducing total vehicle miles traveled. That's VMT. And that would include all the other reasons you might get in a car to go solo. Recreation, shopping, medical appointments, family business, whatever it is. And then the other two goals are related to emissions and actually land use and how that either creates the more, more need to drive solo or can reduce it. Here's an example of Baldur's. Some of the most aggressive in the whole country in their 2035 plan, including, including bicycle ped and transit trips and reducing drive alone and also reducing carpool trips, hopefully shifting those onto transit or biking and walking. The city of Aspen is a local, local success story. They decided to set their vehicle traffic levels at 1993 levels. And as of 2015, they had, they had achieved that. So that's encouraging for our valley. Ralph, do you want to talk about this slide? This one is yours.
Sure. Thank you, Linda. This slide actually comes out of the Basalt to Buttermilk Environmental Impact Statement, ancient history from the mid, the early 90s. Back then, we did have an air quality problem in the valley. We had a PM10 problem that was caused mainly by the traction sand getting ground up. So to widen Highway 82, we had to demonstrate to the federal government that we would not increase traffic anymore than a no-build scenario. So we developed, when you look at the vertical line is average daily weekday traffic. The horizontal line are the various alternatives we looked at. The first alternative, too, that produces 44,900 vehicle trips is an unrestricted four-lane highway like I-70 or Down Valley Highway 82. But when you stick an HOV lane on there and encourage carpooling, you reduce it down by about 2,500 vehicles. Then you start looking at additional park and rides and transit intercept lots and so on. We start dropping down to closer to 40,000 vehicles. Then we buffed up the intercept lot, added, added additional transit and put the buttermilk lot in. And all of a sudden, you see our alternative one is actually starting to get below the levels that were acceptable. So that's how we ended up getting approval from the feds to build, to widen Highway 82 during basically an air quality constraint. But somebody's going to say to me, hey, Ralph, what's going on here? You're talking about 38,000 vehicles here going into Aspen, but they've only had like 23,000 or 24,000 as a, as a peak. How did they accomplish that? Well, this document that I'm showing you here is basically from the mid 90s. Since then, we instituted the BRT in the valley and we also started really raising the level of awareness for people. But most importantly, Aspen instituted their parking system. And all of a sudden, what was predicted to be 38,000 vehicles is down in the 20 to 20, in the 25, 24, sorry, 25,000 range. So this is kind of an example of right here locally of how TDM can effectively manage traffic. Linda, back to you.
Okay. So who's the M in TDM? Who manages these things? And the easiest answer is forming a TMA or a TMO, Transportation Management Association, or organization, which can be coalition of employers. In our case, it could be member cities. If it's a coalition of employers, then local municipalities can provide oversight assistance. It can be just one employer or one work site. Universities are very outstanding and some of the leaders in TDM because of the traffic they have to manage to campuses. It can also happen at a recreation site. A good example here is Hanging Lake and the Maroon Bells shuttle down at the end of the valley. And then a small sub-area like downtown districts, like our downtown could, could just get together and say, we're going to find a better way for our employees, employees to get to work in our area so that there's more room for tourist travel or whatever else. Here's on the left, this is a map of the different TMAs and TMOs in the Denver region. Boulder has six different TMOs alone. So, and then we can see downtown Denver has its own. And then there are big employer as centers of, of transportation generators. And then we've got a couple of good examples in other parts of the state. Durango's done a great job. We heard about Aspen. And then Colorado happens to be a national leader in some of these workplace-oriented TMOs. They've won some awards for that. So we've got in Colorado, history. We've got precedent. We've got a lot of brain power and a lot of best practices at our disposal. So in the roaring fork, Destination 2040 was a planning document that originally was going to include some TM, TDM programs and funding, but ultimately it did not include them. Grand Avenue Bridge Construction, again, big success. And then the MOVE study is also planning to take a look at TDM. In addition, there have been some smaller efforts mainly coordinated between staff at the city of Glenwood and the city of Aspen to do some, some education and marketing campaigns throughout the years. So our next step is we, of course, have already discussed this with the, with the Transportation Commission. Here we are bringing it to council today. We're doing more research, learning about best practices, all the latest technology that has come online right now. Deciding our scope, are we going to start just with Glenwood? Or are we going to recognize that any effort needs to at least include conversations with other regional partners? Identify staff needs and funding. In the last year, we have gotten, and we'll, we'll also in 2021, have gotten some big federal grants through the CARES Act and then the CARES Act has a new name in 2021. These are 100% no-match grants for our transit system. So that could free up some bus tax money to get this off the ground if we find we need that. And then outreach, data needs. As John mentioned in his presentation, we, we really need better origin and destination and travel data in our valley. We don't have anything new since 2014 and we, we need to figure out where we are. And then setting timeline and, and goals. So that's it for questions.
Well, we're going to do questions at the end, Linda, but thank you for that. Let's keep going here because I want to give the council as much time as we can. Where I'm going to move to now is the summary of the Commission TDM document. I know it was in your packet. I'm not going to put it up on the screen. I'm going to talk to it, but this is what it looks like. And I'm going to jump very quickly to page three because we've really basically gone through the introduction already. On page three, we basically talk about how to implement this program. First, first of all, we're suggesting stage one, doing some research and design. Research and design on these TDM programs is important because, for example, this morning, many of my transportation news feeds are saying there may be a long-term situation where as many as 30% of people start working at home and not go back to work. Now that's huge and we need to stay on top of that. And I, I mean, we see it now in the transit and also in the highway counts. But that would be the first stage would be to do a significant amount of research and data acquisition. To start things off, the Transportation Commission would recommend the TDM level and State Highway 82 to be set at about, about 29,000 at Exit 116, 29,000 average annual traffic. That's again a 2019 level right after the Grand Avenue Bridge was finished. That's our initial recommendation, but that needs to be tuned up after we develop more data, after we get a better handle on what the long-term trends are looking like for, for commuting and work at home. So once we get through that data analysis and acquisition, we could go into implementation stage two. We've got basically nine steps in the implementation. The first step, step in implementation is what we call the Level One Tools. That's using our existing infrastructure. For example, implementing the MOVE parking studies and some of the bike and pad recommendations. They're very good. Collaborating with local employers to accommodate commuters, to give them good options. So that gets, that kind of gets us into Level One. If things aren't, if that doesn't keep us at our traffic level that we want, then we start looking at Level Two options. And we've got eight particular options there, which would be again revisiting parking rates. Maybe they need to be raised. If we've got too much traffic coming in, take another look at the transit service levels. Consider some common sense improvements to bus stop locations along Grand Avenue and so on. Anyway, we have eight recommendations on how to move ahead into Level Two. But if things again increase even more beyond Level Two, we go into Level Three and our tools there really involve modifying and improving existing infrastructure. We've got seven steps there. Once again, take a look at the parking rates. Take a look at the transit levels. Take a look at some other options in terms of, for example, an express busway on Midland, which would be very easy to implement. You just tell the buses to go down there. But that's when we, that's when we really get to Level Three and things are starting to get to the point where we might be as much as ten percent over our target. But we have to develop that based on our research. Finally, last but not least is is the Stage Three, and that's what I'm calling the Last Resort at this point. And that's the reconfiguration of Grand Avenue to prioritize transit. Consider putting a BRT route on that Rio Grande corridor. But you would always go there as the Last Resort. If your TDM program just can't manage the the level of traffic that's coming into the city. I think a good TDM program can do that. It's been proven up in Aspen. But, you know, just to summarize, and I I apologize for blowing through a lot of good information very quickly. But again, I want to, I want to give this some time. But really, in summary, the Commission believes that effective TDMP strategies may reduce peak hour traffic on Grand Avenue so effectively that multi million dollar projects would not have to be implemented. And we could, we could manage traffic effectively with a a a very aggressive TDM program. So Sandy, I'll turn it back to you and that's all I've got on TDM this afternoon. Mute Sandy.
Sorry about that. I I like muted. So yeah, thanks. Thanks, everybody for for all the info, all the work you put in on it. You know, we're working pretty well together as a commission and I'd open it up for questions and discussions with the city council. Like, what do you, what do you think?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I got a couple of questions, but first of all, I have to say I'm so impressed and and so grateful to see the expertise we have in our Transportation Commission. So thank you very much for all the work that you put into this and that you continue to put into it. Really quickly, doesn't RFTA has those have those numbers you wanted from that mill levy increase they requested in 2018? As far as newer traffic patterns? I just remember being in on some of those meetings and it felt like I saw meeting after meeting where they were showing what those traffic patterns were like nowadays. So quick resource just to check on. That is 2018, so that's on two, three years ago now.
Can I answer that, Paula? The Destination 2040 work that RFTA did was not a real true multimodal study. It was strictly a transit study. The consultants developed a ridership model that can tell you people about people getting off and on the bus here and there and everywhere. But there was no part of that that was done to look at highway volumes in the connection between transit and highway volumes. So no, it didn't really develop any highway data.
Okay, I must be misremembering. It was three years ago, but that's too bad. That would have been an excellent thing to have at that time. So what number one is going to be the cost to that? And would that be a RFTA cost to find those numbers? And number two, what's the cost for research and design that you said was the first step in all of this, Ralph?
Well, your first question, Paul, of course, we want RFTA to pay for it because we're putting in five million in sa- sales tax. And I don't know how much in property tax at this point. So yeah, Ra- when we say RFTA is going to pay for it, we really mean we're going to pay for it. I can't predict what the cost of this thing would be right now, and I'm sorry for that. I think we need to work, do a little more work to answer more of the questions that John asked to to see what data is available and what isn't. But it's a fair question. But in the long run, if you're looking at twenty million dollars, twenty to thirty million dollar improvements to get buses down the Grant, Rio Grande Quarter, for example, I will guarantee you it would be very, very much less than a cost of something like that.
Okay, a couple more questions. Thank you, Ralph. Clarity on, you said exit one sixteen at Highway 82, you want to keep that to twenty nine thousand vehicles at two nine thousand nineteen levels. Exit one sixteen, is that on I 70 or I'm I'm confused there on where we're talking about? Are you talking high I 70 exit one sixteen or eighty two one sixteen?
Lee, can you answer that? Thank you.
Yeah, I believe the count station was taken under the bridge. So people coming off the highway from the west, so it's I, it's the one sixteen exit. And it was done after the Grand Avenue Bridge, so it would get people going, you know, in and out of town on that west gate, if you will.
Okay, so it is I 70. We're looking for twenty nine thousand coming into town. Okay. And and that's.
So sorry to interrupt. We have about 10 minutes left. I'd love for Charlie and Shelley to answer. We can come back if we have time.
I just, I have one more question.
Paula, you have to give other people a chance too. There's six people, seven people on this board, so let's move on. Thank you.
Paula, do you have something? Do you have the last question?
Fine.
Charlie, go ahead.
Might be quick. I guess I was, I saw this concept that we need a regional or a local transit demand group, and it would seem maybe need a regional group. Is that where the commission seems to be headed?
Well, Charlie, you're right. You're exactly right. We are headed that way. I mean, when you're importing seventy percent of your labor, whether you're in Glenwood or Aspen, you're going to have to make this a regional problem because Rifle is in our region. It's not in our town. I think it clearly needs to be a regional, a regional approach to this.
I I agree, and that's my, a question, my comment. I think we need to do this as part of a valleywide effort.
Thanks to all of you and thanks Linda and Ralph and the whole Transportation Commission and Terry for all working together on this. I do think that the Commission, you know, even though it's it's been a little bit painful at times this last few months, but the Commission has raised some very good questions about the the RFTA and the city study. And I think overall, the concept of TDM, I'm very supportive of. It's something that we have talked about as a city for more than 20 years, but we've never really committed and made the investment and done it. And I think now is the time we've reached critical mass where we can look at paid parking once we get past this pandemic stage. We do have the example of the Grand Avenue Bridge project where we showed how successful this can be. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, what's the next step here? One of my questions is, what do you need from council for direction to actually start working on this and putting a plan together and seeing this move forward? Because I do think, you know, even though you all have heard me say before, I have a vision that one day we might have light rail on that RFTA corridor. But if we can put off a multimillion dollar project even for 20 years, and not only that, but get our, get our traffic down on Highway 82 and Grand Avenue to a point where it's livable again. And that was one of my questions for you, Ralph and the Commission. You guys kind of set the 2019 levels as an initial target. We do better than that, you know, can we go back and set a level at a lower, something that was more livable for our main street? That's one of my questions, and you don't have to answer it now. My other question for staff and Deborah is, how do we fund this? And when, you know, how do we get cost estimates and funding? And Paula asked about some of the cost estimates too. And then my other question was, we are have, we have, I think many of you probably saw the article in the paper and heard about the conversations that the county is having. They met with Rifle and they're talking about cutting all the funding for hogback. And what kind of work do we need to do to, you know, keep that hogback in place? Because it's very important to our our traffic levels. So those are my questions right now, but overall I appreciate the work that you've done and I definitely support moving forward on TDM, even if we just start out with the city and with our major employers.
Deborah, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think to answer your question, Shelley, the first step would be for council to tell us to put this on an evening agenda and then direct me to direct staff to find out what the costs are. Right, right now I have no ability, you guys have no ability to make a decision, nor do I know what all of council wants.
Right. But we often give indication of direction at a work session.
I, yes, but I definitely, that indirect, that direction to me, I would prefer it for be to put it on an evening agenda so you guys can make a formal decision.
Okay, that's excellent. Yep.
Tony.
Ralph Tripenny, I, someone said the word light rail and I'm having PTSD.
Get a grip, Mr. Hershey.
Having dealt with this situation now in two major communities, this is an Aspen centric problem. And what, you know, and Ralph, I I I agree with Deborah Figaro that, you know, I think that there needs to be more direction. But I continue to think that the people in Glenwood Springs don't have to pay the price because Aspen can't house its employees and drives the traffic. So it's a situation that definitely has to be addressed regionally, but they need to be more of the leaders when they have the resources and the money and the ear of the governor, et cetera. And I was just curious what your thoughts about that are. I mean, where is this problem emanating? Or is it really all our problem from parachute to Aspen?
Well, it's a, you read the comics, Councilman Hershey. I mean, it's, we have met the enemy and it is us. I mean, people need mobility. They got to get around and they've got to get to work. But parking your yourself in a single occupancy vehicle at peak hour means you're taking more than your fair share. That's something we we just can't accommodate. It, you know, and I I I know we're, we're, I I know you're the last person I'd want to be pitching Aspen programs to. But if we're we're importing as much P, as many people from out of town to work in Glenwood as Aspen is. So we've got an Aspen problem or it's it's a Glenwood problem. We've got seventy percent of our workers coming in from West Garfield County and a little bit from from the south. So we have to look at this as a regional effort, I think.
Rob, did you have something?
Yeah, briefly to Mr. Hershey's comment and to echo what Rob is saying. Our part of what we want to understand when we ask for more data is who's moving where and when. Initially, looking at some of the information, I expected to see a lot of people from West Garfield County going through us to Aspen. But the preliminary numbers we've seen show that that's maybe half of it. Half of it is people coming to Glenwood. We have huge employers with the city and the county, Valley View School District. They're coming here. So we have a really interesting, unique set of problems. We have people going through us, people coming to us. And then we have, of course, an obligation to serve our own citizens who want to get somewhere too. Most of them are going up valley. So TDM is a great way to look at it, in my view, because it sort of digests all those numbers and figures out how to regulate movement in a way that maximizes our existing city streets. It's the same reason why I think building a BRT busway to downtown and putting in a transit center and then seeing what's next is very much cart before the horse. And while I have the microphone, I'll say one more thing about costs. Some of the things we've looked at are specifically targeted at cost generating early, right? If there's a paid parking program, that's money in the city's coffers right away to look at other things. If we don't do paid parking and we just bolster parking enforcement, we have a better parking situation and we have more money. And the sooner we get right, RFTA to take over the right Glenwood route on six and 24, the more money we have to do more innovative things. It's a much more effective way of activating six twenty four if RFTA does it than if we do it. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll presume to 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 second a portion of what Rob said, and that is to put some of this responsibility back on the Transportation Commission as as you to answer questions like Paula has. And and especially about costs and especially about the sensitivity to more studies being an anathema often, because we need to be sure that if we're going to invest in a study, it's going to have results that can be quickly implemented or use the data that we already have or find ways to fund additional research. So it's not just an out of the blue burden on the city council's budget.
Thank you, Steve, and I I apologize. We started you guys a little bit late. I'll let's go a little bit longer, but we do have an executive session, session after this. So Charlie, last question or comment?
I just, real quickly, I think we should put this on an evening agenda. I think we, the direction Deborah is, I think we need to look at this and we need to figure out the cost and do that. And then before I I stop, I'd like to take a moment to thank Sandy Low and Lee Barker, who will be leaving the Transportation Commission shortly because they're term limited. I've worked with them for, I guess, the last four years in this commission and they are both very hardworking, really dedicated to this group, and I appreciate all the effort and time they put in on behalf of the city.
Lee, are you, or Sandy, are you off this year or next year?
Next year.
Next year.
Yeah, and I I think I applied for a second or a third term. I think we're allowed.
I know you were hoping, Charlie, but you know.
Yeah, I'll second that though, too. Lee's, Lee's done a great job. I've worked on Transportation Commission. Gosh, seems like we were on earlier too, Lee.
Probably.
You've provided a lot of great expertise and guidance for the city, so thank you for all your service.
Deborah.
I was just going to ask, tell us, if you can, what aspects of it you would like us to come back with, because it was big. Or is it all of it?
Somebody?
In all of it.
Yeah, I'm interested in, you know, there's, there's a basic framework of a plan here between what Linda has talked about, what the Transportation Commission has recommended. I'd be interested in hearing from Terry and Linda and staff on, you know, what's a good starting point, maybe some possible areas of funding where we can come up with funding and you know, that will, I think, give us enough to give direction and and get started.
So for TDM or for the changes to the move study?
Well, I think that we didn't really talk a lot about the changes to the move study. I think if you need direction on that, maybe you need to put that on an agenda too. Because we didn't really get into that as much here. I read about it in the packet, but we didn't discuss all the recommendations. And those are recommendations to council. I I think I'd like to hear a little bit more on Steph's input too. But to the extent that they, you know, align with us wanting to move, put some priority on TDM, then I think it's all one big question you need to bring back to us. Let's see what the rest of council thinks.
And Deborah, I guess my view, though, just throw it real quickly and I'll just take a second. I think what I'd like to see is, is how do we create a regional transportation steering committee, whatever it may be? And then what would that do? And that may help us focus on where we're going to go from from here. That was my thoughts as I listened to this presentation.
Charlie, I'll say I like that idea in theory, but part of the presentation tonight was taking TDM out of the move study because the move study was so Herculean, those, we were having a hard time digesting it. So I I guess I would, well, I absolutely support that. I think if the only thing that we did in 2021 was digest parking, hey, park it, that was it, I would be incredibly happy. But that's, that's just me. I'd love to hear from Paula.
Um, yeah, I I first of all, we have the Transportation Commission, which has put numerous hours into this from what I could perceive. And and so we've got the basis of people that can lead us. I don't want to go back to space one and go, okay, start over. We've got this information that this group has got together. Let's get a whole new group together and start going. Let's really look at what we can do with where we're at right now and what's the most convenient and consequential consequential way to move forward. So I'm very interested in what's been presented to us tonight. I really like the idea of not spending millions of dollars on Grand Avenue or Rio, the Rio Grande Quarter and and finding the lower hanging fruit. So I'd like us to address some of those questions. Address them and then I'd like to get a group together and start moving on. What steps next? Do we, do we line up these level one, level two tools? And maybe that's what the Transportation Commission can come back with next is here's what we can do 2021, and these are the things we'd address. And that may take after we speak at a council meeting. So that's kind of my feeling on this is let's not start over. Let's take where we're at and move forward.
And it wasn't my intent to start over. It wasn't my intent to start over. So I think I kind of, Mr. Baker and Paul, I've kind of where you guys are with that, so I apologize. So maybe I didn't state that well.
I would say let's put on the next agenda or future agenda. If it's not the next agenda, if that gets full, recommendations from Linda and Terry, Deborah, staff, I guess, is what we call them.
To just say, here's our suggestion on what we think would be the most effective way forward. And let's have a conversation on an agenda at a city council meeting where we have a little bit more time to get in depth and we can provide better, uh, direction. Because I don't think, at least from what I'm hearing, we're providing staff with definitive direction right now. Well, we can't, but like even a, a start of definitive direction. So.
I think what I heard was more TDM than large regional group. Terry, does that make sense to you?
You know, um, I think that Ralph was right earlier that, um, TDM is a, is a valley wide, um, issue and, and need. Um, I think that, you know, it would be a good idea. You know, I think that there are two things, um, that we could do, maybe should start to do is to assemble, um, a coalition of local governments. And maybe this comes, this comes from you, Deborah, the, you know, the, um, mayors and managers from other, um, other cities to talk about, um, you know, our travel patterns in and out and the ways that we affect each other. Because I think Jen, um, at one point, there was a, an idea of a conversation with the state. And the state was also interested in, um, in this idea that, you know, um, how we, how we, the price of our housing and how, you know, our job market contributes to the transportation issues and therefore the need to manage traffic kind of, um, regionally. So I think that, um, you know, if we could have a, a meeting of, um, local governments and to talk about maybe forming something, um, where we would, um, you know, begin to, um, realize these solutions as a group. I think that that would actually be beneficial. And then the second thing I think would be good is, um, you know, that, um, analysis of movement between communities. And we have talked about that in the past. So a, a cost for a study.
Guys, we are running behind right now and sorry, I'm a bit, uh, we're running behind. We have an executive session that we have to get to. I can't take any more comments or directions. If we need more direction, we're going to have to put it on a future agenda or work session. So thank you, Transportation Commission, for all your hard work. Sorry, we always seem to be cutting everybody off and, and moving us along. But if we don't, we'd be here for two hours. So we will, I'm sure, have another conversation with Guy this, in the next several months, looking forward to it. And, uh, Deborah and I and Shelley will get together and try to figure out when it, we can fit this into a more comprehensive conversation and a future agenda item. With that, Carl, um, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Uh, Carl, talk to us about, uh, what we need to do as far as logging off onto this and logging on to the separate link and everything else.
Absolutely. So you all should have received in your email in the last hour, a new Zoom link. Um, that, um, is for the executive session. What I kind of want to let the public know now, we've been trying to figure out the best way to make this work smoothly for you and to get your dinner break in, uh, is that we intend to go into recess after that executive session so that you guys can get some dinner. And we're hoping it only takes 15 to 20 minutes. So you get, guys get that break that you, you usually do. Um, we may bring the mayor back to announce that, or we may just flash it up on the screen, that we're in recess, um, after the executive session, whichever is easiest for Alyssa and the mayor. The other thing that we're going to do, as you know, the last time we did this, we had some problems with the recording. What I've started doing with other jurisdictions is having the mayor pro tem make the motion to go into executive session. We script that out very carefully. Have her as the only one. I mean, historically, we've kind of, you know, we've been a little more informal about this and I apologize for the formality that I'm asking for, but it seems to be the best way to deal with, um, Zoom, frankly. Um, so the other thing I want to remind everybody, we have a narrow topic for the executive session. Um, I've talked to the mayor about being very aggressive with the mute button. Um, and with all of us, both staff as well as council about staying on topic tonight. Um, it is a narrowly worded executive session related to, um, getting some direction on a lease renewal for a piece of city owned property. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor and the mayor pro tem to, to get us into exec session.
Carl, do you have that memo for me to read for the motion?
Uh, I sent it to you via email probably three hours ago.
Okay.
Sorry.
For.
Oh, I see one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to be logging out. We'll be logging back in on the other link and then we'll be, or do we need to make the motion in this current?
Make the motion in this one and I don't want to, we're starting to lose people for this one. So we need to maintain a quorum to get in.
Okay. So let me, let me start, right? We have an executive session on the agenda that's the following. Executive session, discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of any real personal or other property interest pursuant to CRS 24 dash six dash four oh two A and E, more specifically, the lease renewal of the property at 2205 Grand Avenue. Shelley, can you make the motion, please?
Yes, I can, if you give me one second. Sorry. My computer's giving me trouble. Okay, I move to go into executive session for the purpose of conducting a conference with the city manager and city attorney to discuss the city's purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of real property, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators pursuant to CRS 24 dash six dash four oh two four A and E regarding the lease renewal of the property located at 2205 Grand Avenue.
Is there a second? Uh, I think we should be audible.
I'm trying to audible second. Oh, I'm sorry. Paula.
I, I, I will, I'll take Tony as the second on that one. Thank you, guys. Okay, uh, all in favor signify, no, I'm sorry, all in favor, raise your hand and also audibly say aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. The link was sent to you by Alyssa. It should have come in around four 20 to four 25. We'll see you guys on the other side.
All right, if everybody can hear me, I'm Jonathan Goode, as mayor. We are now adjourned out of executive session. I'll read what I just read prior to this. Sorry. We just adjourned out of executive session. I as mayor hereby test that this recording reflects the actual discussion of the executive session. It has been made to satisfy the recording requirements of the Colorado Open Meetings Law. I hereby request the city clerk retain the record for a 90-day period. It's now 5:31 PM. Thank you, everybody. We'll adjourn until 5:00, 6:15. Thank you.